Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter is on her way. Councilmember Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Galini?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we adjourn to executive session.
Second, we have a motion to second adjourn to executive session, any other discussion? There are none, I call for the question on the paper, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session, second. Okay, let's stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
We have to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the first call to the public, for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during open call of public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. I believe I have one written request, Jim Cheetah?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. A lot can be said in three minutes. I was trained to make so-called elevator speech. By the time the elevator gets from the ground floor to 10th floor, you've already said it all. Anyway, since tonight, I'm Jim Cheetah, a resident of Florence, speaking on behalf of I went to a CIP open forum that I thought was, the intent was very good. So I had a chance there to say pretty much all of what I had to say, but tonight I'd like to say a little bit more to all of you on the council with regard to the CIP, especially given 10 years, a 10-year capital plan, especially at a time when we're looking for a new town manager. I think what is important is that a 10-year capital plan would infer to me that we had a strategic intent. Where is it that we're trying to go as a town? I don't see how we could talk about capital plans. Of course, you know sewage treatment, that's a necessity. The more residents we add, we have to have more sewage treatment, but in terms of building new facilities and making our town a more livable place, which I think we're trying to do, I mean just look across the street, it's fantastic facilities, I mean really fantastic. And the new sign, it looks great. But there must be a strategic intent behind that. And I can speculate what it is, based upon the North End framework, the Territory Square, the Drachman Institute came here and did a Greenway Plan, and I think those of you who have been with the town for a number of years, you've seen those plans. I think the community needs to know, what is the strategic intent of the town? And I think the new town manager needs to be given a piece of paper that says this is the strategic intent of the town. And we tend to fund projects according to that strategic intent. One or two years of tight finances, it's not a big deal. You just slipped the plan. You slipped the plan a year or two, but you get back on course. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim. Does anyone else like to speak and call the public? Seeing no movement, I call closed call the public.
Item eight, public hearing and presentation. Public hearing on our request by Piero Bucellato to approve an application proposed for a zone change on approximately .36 acres of land located at 680 East First Street, Florence, Arizona, for multi, for neighborhood multifamily zoning district to highway business commercial zoning district, and first reading of ordinance number 640-15, an ordinance of the town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona approving a zone change on .36 acres from neighborhood multifamily zoning district to highway business commercial zoning district. Mr. Echol?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We're getting this zone change back, back on track and helping the Bucellato family with their plans to grow their business that they have moved into at the corner of First Street and 79. That existing building there and that property was already Zoned B2, and they've worked with us to, to add the little deli and the coffee shop in, in that facility along with the chiropractor office that's already been in there. They, in their expansion plans, they'd like to use the lot that is behind them, to the west of them, between them and the Union Baptist Church to grow into that, to grow into the business a little bit more and provide room for parking and some other features. And so they are asking to change that lot to commercial. And that zone change is consistent with the general plan. Staff has supported that zone change, Planning Commission supported their application, and it is pretty, pretty straightforward. So they've moving, moving ahead already with the existing commercial business. The lot will give them opportunities to grow and add some improvements on, on that lot.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Any member of the council have any question to Mark?
I have a question on the-
Go ahead.
-parking. Will that be paved parking?
Mayor, members of the council, Member Anderson, the parking would typically be paved on new development, however, under the adaptive, adaptive reuse policy that the council came up with, we have the option of going, of allowing a alternative surface that would also meet the Penale County air quality standards on some of the existing infill development in the downtown only. So unless any objections are expressed, we would, the staff would consider that alternative. Any ADA parking that would have to be improved with a concrete or asphalt surface.
I'd like to see it paved parking personally. It just adds so much more to our, to our town and for the people using, you know, the parking lot. Parking on paved surface is a lot more convenient and invite you to go park there.
So noted, and I think because on this lot that they have more room to work with, we could, we could definitely work with them on, on those improvements on the, on the vacant lot. Now, on the existing building, they may choose to maintain the parking that they have there now, which is-
And that's grandfathered.
Which is grand, which is grandfathered.
Any other question? This time I'll open the public hearing. Does any member of the public have anything they'd like to ask? Any comment? Seeing no movement, I'll close the public hearing.
Item B, presentation of fire quarterly activity schedule for the fourth quarter of 2015. Mayor and council, I'm very pleased to present our fire chief to give his quarterly statement of activity schedule. He sent this over to staff and I was so impressed that I thought that the council should see it as well, so, thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to allow me to share the plans for your fire department over the next three months. We started this quarterly planning process last quarter, so this is actually the second document, and I think it'll give you a good idea of, of everything we have planned for the next three months here. This is just the index of the activities, and I'll, I'll move fairly quickly unless there's questions, because there's kind of a lot to cover here, but this is the index of activities. Each quarterly has a purpose statement, vision, and values. It really gives us the opportunity to revisit who we are, why we're here, and what we're doing, and how we behave and conduct ourselves. And so that, that is revisited every quarter, and that's why you'll see this in every activity schedule. This is a chronological sequence of the 14 different program areas we're going to be hitting over the next three months, but we'll, I'm gonna go into those individually. Like I say, I'll, I'll move it along, because there's a lot to cover, but if there's questions, please, please let me know. This, starting off with events, this is actually the Parks and Recreation Department's schedule of events. We have varying levels of activities in these events depending on what they are, so we put those out in front of the crews and just to make them aware of the dates, times, and locations, and then we'll let them know the level of our participation as they occur, and then we put that in our own scheduling program. This is a, a very unique event that's, this is in its third year. It's called Arizona Run for the Fallen, and they're actually, this is a, an effort to honor members of the fallen, of the armed services that have died in battle. And they're actually establishing a corridor that's 146 miles long that goes from Tucson to Phoenix. And it, it has a mile marker for every member, or members of the military that have fallen that's, that's designated to those members. And as this run progresses, there's four runners carrying flags, and there's, there's a presentation made to family members at each mile marker. So it's a very powerful event that honors the military and their families. Our role in this, initially, we were providing medical coverage from Tucson all the way to Phoenix. We expanded that this year, because law enforcement also hands this off between jurisdictions. So this year, we're really covering our area and all the other fire departments, of which there are nine total departments. We're gonna hand this off between them, so that I think it honors, all these other departments wanted to participate, and it just shows the level of support for this. So we have Tucson, Rural Metro, Golda Ranch, us, Apache Junction, I guess that's Superstition Mountain now, Mesa, Tempe, Phoenix, all those departments are gonna be handing off medical coverage for the runners during this event. This is occurring October 16th through the 18th. We're gonna be involved in the afternoon of the 16th and the morning of the 18th. We have quarterly meetings and a committee process that we use internally to manage different program areas. We have four areas primarily that we focus on, health and safety, physical resources, EMS, and training. Each committee is chaired by a battalion chief and co-chaired by a captain, and you can kind of see the, the areas that they're responsible for underneath. From those committees, recommendations are generated and forwarded to staff, and then staff looks at the budget and we determine long-range planning out of this process, but they meet quarterly to develop that. So I don't wanna get into too much detail tonight, but be happy to answer any questions about that. Also, as we restructure with our operations and administrative battalion chiefs, trying to provide more clarity on roles and responsibilities to prevent duplication of effort and just to, to establish, you know, a good structure, so the captains know where to go for certain things. So that delineated those responsibilities in those two boxes at the bottom there, and that's a living document that we, we update that as needed and tweak it until we, we'll get it exactly the way we want it here, but it's, it's pretty close now, it's working pretty well right now. Upcoming events, I know, excuse me, I know it's been mentioned in past meetings of our pending ISO grading. There's a number of activities that we're implementing to prepare for that grading process, and this first one is, is one of those. It's multi-company drills of all our mutual aid partners, and it's a dual benefit for us, because we get to practice with our mutual aid partners, so that when we have those big fires, like the one at the prison, we're ready for them, and it also helps us prepare for our ISO grading. There's a, there's a long process that's, that goes into that grading, that whole grading process, but this is a key element in terms of improving our, not only our, our capability, but also our grade. So this is gonna take place at the Central Arizona College Training Tower down there, and so far we have about five agencies committed to training with us. It's gonna take place in, in the month of December, and we're gonna, we're gonna start it off as Florence, we'll lead out on this, but I've got commitments from the other departments to take turns leading out. So we'll start it, and the other departments will come along, and, and we'll take turns with that process. So this is just the first run at it. Excuse me. The next item we're planning in the quarter is a post-incident analysis on the, the prison fire. That was a, it's looking like it's gonna be well over a $2 million fire loss, so it's a very significant event, and there's, there's a lot of things that are unique to prison fires that we want to, we're putting together a very comprehensive post-incident analysis that really dissects that entire incident from the initial call all the way through the investigation, and then we wanna call in everyone, all the agencies that responded, of which there were seven, seven other fire agencies. We're gonna call them in, and we're gonna go through that incident, and we're gonna, again, dissect it. What were, what did we learn from it? How would we do it different next time? What went well? What didn't go well? That whole discussion will take place, and then we really owe it to our partners, our mutual aid partners, and to tell them what to expect when they respond into Florence on a prison fire, because they don't have prisons in their jurisdiction. So they really rely on us to, to be the experts on that here, so we're gonna, we're gonna do everything we can to meet that expectation. Finally, on training, we have a, we have a wash program through CAC. It's, unfortunately, it looks like it's gonna go away after this, this, these two classes, but it's really a no-cost training for our department, where you get college credit, and we have to pay upfront, but we get reimbursed for it at the end, so it's, it's, that's why they call it a wash. But we use this for promotional preparedness. So two of these two classes, as an example, ethics and building construction, you need these to promote the captain in our department, so we're providing those internally through this program, and it helps train our personnel, makes them better, but it also prepares them for succession planning, for future promotions, and so on. So that's part of the professional development series, we're gonna be implementing this next quarter. Special projects is another category. We're really focusing on records management. These are the two of the areas that we're gonna be spending some time on, we're analyzing how we're currently managing records, and then we're looking at how we can get better at that. There's a lot that can be done to capture important information. There, there's so much information nowadays, you really have to be able to sift through and determine what do you really want and need to capture. Part of this is driven by, again, the pending ISO grading, but the other part of doing this enhances our ability, ability to run reports, to perform analytical evaluations of what we're doing, and should, you know, it should prepare us for the future in terms of where to put stations, whether the call volume is, what are peak hours, days of the week, all kinds of information like that, if we can get good information and we're tracking it correctly. So that's really the essence of these two areas of emergency reporting being one program and target solutions the other, and that's, that's the goal there. So the idea is, in this quarter, we're gonna reconfigure both of those programs, identify the data that we wanna capture, and roll out the new method in January of 2016. Fire hydrants, again, dual reason for doing this, one is for preparing for ISO, but the other one is also, we wanna make sure our fire hydrants work, that they're functional, that they're accessible, and if there's any issues associated with them, we wanna know about them before the fire, not at the fire. So we're implementing an annual hydrant service. Essentially, this is the form that the crews are gonna be given, and this form is filled out on each hydrant. You can kind of take a quick look and see we're capturing static pressures, hydrant sizes, accessibility, and just basic flow data. We're not getting, we're not doing full comprehensive data, or flow data on it, because it would just take too long to do 1,000 hydrants that way, but we're gonna get basic flow data, and we're gonna know if they're turned on and if they work. And that's just, that's the critical information, to just go out and revisit annually. In order to get that done, we've got six crews, so we've divided the town up into six sections. They're essentially getting, on average, 150 hydrants per crew, and you can, these maps here delineate the borders that they're gonna, that each crew is, is given, and then everything within those borders is that, is that area. You can see at the bottom there who it's assigned to, Engine 541 C shift in this case, and the number of hydrants in the little box here, and so on. So that's rolling out, we're training on that Wednesday, rolling that out next week. A couple more things here. Everyone Goes Home is a safety program that was developed to really identify all key aspects of safety, you know firefighting's a dangerous job, so we wanna do everything we can to mitigate those, you know, the dangerous parts of it. So there's 16, 16 initiatives associated with it, it's a very comprehensive program. I'm just introducing it during this quarter. We will train on it more going forward, but this is just an introduction to this program, and it's just a, it's as much of a mindset as, or a culture as anything else of, of just training firefighters to be safe. We want them to be healthy and safe. Support services, we're gonna get, this is annually, we do compressor air servicing, hose testing, ladder testing, and pump testing. It's just part of doing business, we've gotta make sure all our equipment is up to speed and running. And then finally, we wanna, just as part of our identity, we wanna remember our past, we honor our past as we move forward. This particular one, I went, visited the Historical Society a few months back, and I got copies of all, everything they had on the fire department, and this is a picture of a fire that occurred in 1929 here in Florence at the post office, and it's just, I mean, I'm a history buff anyway, but this is great stuff with the, with the wagons and the old cars and how people dressed back then, and just the history here is amazing. And this is just a snapshot of the fire department history specifically, so we wanna include that kind of thing in on our quarters as well. So Mayor, Council, that's your, that's your fire department's plans for the next three months? We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief? Any comments?
Yeah, I've got a question about the CAC dropping that course. Is there anything we can do to, to support that course in any way, so that they don't drop it?
Well, we're, we're trying to, we've given them several ideas that they're taking back, but at this point, I think it has to do with everything else that's going on with the college right now. It's all kind of wrapped up into a, so the feedback we're getting right now is not encouraging, but there's, this goes till March of 2016, so we're still hoping there's a way to salvage the program before then. But off the top of my head, I can't think of anything specifically, but I can sure, sure see if I can come up with something on that.
Will it do any good if we as a council send them a letter or anything?
With what's going on out there right now, like the chief said, I don't know if it'd do any good or not right now. I think it, we just stay out of their business for right now, I think would be the best shot for us.
Okay.
I have a question about the hydrant inspections. It looks like those hydrants are installed by and owned by not only the town, but Johnson Utilities, and some are privately owned.
Yes.
If any deficiencies are found in any of those hydrants, who's responsible for repairing them?
Well, the, Wayne can correct me, because I'm still, there's a few areas that may be a little gray. Typically, the, all the downtown hydrants are owned by the town, they would be our responsibility. Johnson Utilities would be responsible for theirs, and we've already made contact with them, and they know we're doing this, and so they're aware of it. The only thing they asked us to do is to monitor the amount of water we use, so they can track that, because they have to file reports on that. And typically, private hydrants are the responsibility of the property owner. So we don't usually do private hydrants, we do public hydrants. So that's going to be a discussion point, there's a, there's an email thread that been involved in, in discussing some of the county hydrants that I don't know is, is resolved at this point. I think it's still being studied, but that's typically how it's, how it's done.
Thank you.
Wayne, you have something you wanna add?
No, basically, yes, just a few items. One is, at this time, I think we only have one dead hydrant in town that's at the corner of Addisville and Main Street, so we've done, been proactive in that in the past six months or so. And then we have a continual budget request in there for new hydrants and also for repair of old hydrants. So we wanna focus on, get the spacing in there and ensure that the maintenance. Fire Department has their own program, and they notify our water, wastewater division on any repairs that are needed. On private hydrants, typically in the past, what we've done is notify the owner of the property and indicate the deficiencies, and basically they have complied with bringing that hydrant up to staff. But once we know about it, then we can go in there and react.
Where do we have private hydrants at?
Any place that we don't have easement. The county is one, the area, the hospital area on Addisville, that area is another one, the county facilities in that area, on Florence Heights, the apartment complex on that area, and basically any area that we don't have easement, that's where we have private hydrants.
Is there any way that we should be taking a look at these, when these developments come in, like the apartment complex, and have them dedicate those hydrants and, and put them in where you, where the fire department want them?
Yes, well, during the planner view process, they do that. It's just the ongoing maintenance is their responsibility, but they place them where, when they submit plans, we, we tell them where to place the hydrants.
And in the Anthem area, if I could say that, most of the commercial areas, we do, we do, but Johnson Utilities does have easements. We, we specifically request that on a dense commercial. Many of the areas I'm talking about is, you know, historical issues that resulted at that time, but there might be a change in heart specifically with the county at this time.
Mike, it was the ones you're talking about out there at Addisville, the county put them in when it was still out in the county area, and I don't know how much communication was done between the town and the county at that time.
And I think, Mayor Rankin, I think that's been ongoing previously, when the hospital came on board, we did ask for, you know, easement at that time, but they still were hesitant to give it to us. But we'll pursue that continually. We jointly with the fire department do review the site plans and bring it to attention. We want fire flow test done, we want easement, we want fire lane access, so all that is coupled in with the site plan.
Good. Any other question? Chief, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Item nine, consent agenda. All items, all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, approval of change order number three with garnish construction in amount not to exceed $5,563 for a total project cost of $1,696,921, and extending the project completion date to November 30th, 2015. Item B, accepting of a grant of $95,193.66 from Tahoma Odom Nation for the purpose of purchasing advanced life support equipment to be used by the Florence Fire Department. Item C, approval of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce's application for an special event liquor license for a business after hour mixer event on November 5th, 2015 at McGarland State Park. Item D, proclamation proclaiming October 2015 as National Community Planning Month in the town of Florence, and highlight the contributions, sound planning, and plan implementation to make resilient communities. Item E, approval of accepting the register of demands ending August 31st, 2015 in the amount of $2,945,648.21. Mayor, member of council, that is your consent agenda for this evening.
Any member of the council have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Any member of the public have anything they'd like taken off the consent agenda? Seeing no movement, I need a motion? Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as read.
Hold on a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Item 10, item A, new business. Item A, resolution number 1566-15, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Penale County- the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, it's written twice, sorry, amending the Florence Town Rules and Procedures effective November 5, 2015. Mayor, members of council, if you're, as you are aware, we just adopted these not too long ago. When we were going through and reading the sanctions, we noticed that the boards and commissioners were being held the same way as the council. What that means specifically is council cannot be removed from office by a code of ethic violations because council members are elected. That means council members can only be removed via the recall process. You do not have a recall process for boards and commissions, and that makes your code of ethics violations to be a way that council could remove them. So what we have done is we have went in and we've changed that section of the code to make it to where board and commission members could be removed by council if a code of ethics violation does happen.
Do you remember the council have any questions? Hearing none, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 1566-15.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second to adopt resolution 1566-15. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B is for discussion approval, disapproval of ratifying and approving the terms of an engagement for legal services, an engagement agreement with Gus Rosenfeld, PLC for legal representation of the town of Florence, pending litigation against Florence Copper, Inc., Town of Florence versus Florence Copper, Inc., case number CV 2015-000325.
Cliff? What do you like to say? The council?
Mayor, members of the council, this is basically a cleanup item. The primary lawyer representing the town in this litigation changed firms, and so this is confirming the prior arrangement for that representation and that his representation of the town continues over to the new firm and to make sure that we have an approved contract with his new firm, Gus Rosenfeld.
Do you remember the council have any question? Hearing none, we need a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve and ratify the terms of engagement for legal services and engagement agreement with Gus Rosenfeld, PLC.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second to approve and ratify the terms of engagement for legal services engagement agreement with Gus Rosenfeld, PLC. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You got your department reports in front of you. Are there any questions in any of the departments?
I have one for Public Works. Oh, Wayne, there was a lady who wrote an article to the paper stating that water pressure had dropped since we put in the new tank out on the north end of town. I was wondering, is that true or is there a problem there or what's going on?
Yes, I'll go into a little detail on it. Mayor Rankin, Vice Mayor Walter, Councilman Hawkins. Yes, when they put the tank in, they basically addressed the water flow requirement, water demands and the fire flow requirements. The design report specifically called for a additional water line to be placed in and dividing Florence Garden into pressure zones. That water line was never placed in. So what we have done since that time, I went back and reviewed the design report, and what we're doing is we increases two of the four booster pumps at the water tank. That will handle most of the water pressure problems. In addition, we have requested a budgetary item to install the eight-inch water line to connect from the water tank down to Pennsylvania Avenue, and that will take care of the upper pressure zone. There will continue to be a small area just south of Arizona Boulevard that may experience low water pressure. And when I say low water pressure, I'm talking 40 PSI. Statutory wise, it's 20 PSI, but it's 40 PSI. In order to accommodate that, we have to take a more in-depth look at the routing and the lines in that area are basically two-inch and four-inch lines. So we have to provide a loop for those lines, and that small area below Arizona, we will go into design and provide a loop for that. But basically, our target will be to get those two pumps installed by the end of the year. By the end of this year, hopefully, we'll have the eight-inch line installed, and next year, we hope to address the small pressure area below Arizona.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question on the administration report for Public Works. There's an indication that traffic control devices were installed at Merrill Ranch Parkway at Sun City Boulevard and Constitution Avenue. Are those the speed little devices that show the speed of the autos?
No, that's a police department function that they have done up there. What we did, basically, we oversized the stop signs. We put in stop ahead signs. And I believe we have completed a pavement marking at Sun City or Merrill, and Merrill Ranch Parkway to indicate stop ahead or stop sign. That's to address the concern about the visibility of the stop sign going eastbound on Merrill Ranch Parkway. All the other, the rest of the intersection has been looked at in regards to site distance and in regard to visibility, et cetera. And then we constantly remind Pulte to take a proactive approach with the homeowners association or to trim back the bushes. So we think we have it solved. I don't recall if that pavement marking is in place yet, but it will be in shortly if it's not.
Since that wasn't what I was thinking it was, maybe I could ask Chief Hughes. Those traffic speed measurement devices that are on Merrill Ranch, Merrill Ranch Parkway, there's one, I think, that shows when a car approaches how fast they're going. Is that something your department handles?
Yes.
I noticed that it's intermittently off. Is there a technical issue there?
It is a device. That's something that's been an ongoing problem with that one. It's a battery. We've had them out several times to fix that. That's one that we got on a grant. And we do download all that and track what the minimum speed is, what the highest speed is, so that we know whether or not to do any type of enforcement up there. I can tell you, for the most part, people do obey the speed limit up there, but I will look into that being an intermittent problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question about, not a question, but a comment about the finance report. I talked to the town manager today about to get a better understanding, but if you look at our financial report, it says that we are running 12% so far. And if you look at where we should be, it's like 16%. So we're running about 4% under budget, which is outstanding. Also, a lot of the contracts, as I understand it, have already been paid front-end. So I want to compliment all of the department managers for keeping an eye on the budget. It looks like we're going to have a pretty good year. Keep this up.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, we go to second call to the public. If anybody from the public has anything they'd like to say, same rules apply. Seeing none, call, closed call to the public. Call the council, John.
Look, a couple of things. One, I think we just need to thank the Indian Nation for their $95,000 that they gave us. Sometimes we overlook that, but they're good neighbors, they're good citizens, and appreciate what they're doing. Also, I want to thank the department managers for all the reports that they've given us and thank the fire chief for his presentation tonight. It sure makes our job, or at least my job, a whole lot easier if I can go through and understand all this. I would make one recommendation to all of you is page number your reports, put the date on them, and put your name on them. You know, you do a lot of work. You need to be recognized for that, so. And also, if we have page numbers and we want to question something, it makes it easier for us if I say, I want to question, you know, page 12 of so-and-so's report. So just a suggestion for you. Thank you.
Becky?
Just to thank Brian and Rose for the wonderful turnout this Saturday for the grand opening of the Aquatic Center and the library. It was a great turnout. There was a lot of people there, a lot of happy people there, so it was a great job.
Bill? Well, back that, except I want to add that we had really a great cross-section of the town's people there, which was pretty impressive. It wasn't just business people or, you know, movers and shakers, let's say. It was a great cross-section of the town. I mean, there were young people, retired people, people from all walks of life, and I think everybody really enjoyed theirsself, and I heard nothing but great comments about the facility.
Karen?
Nothing, thank you.
Sorry.
Just to piggyback on what has been said, the event on Saturday was wonderful. And also on what John said about Tohona Odom Nation, that I was able to personally thank the chairman for the donation, so we do appreciate their partnership with our community.
Karen?
I do not have anything new this evening that has not already been said.
I guess the only thing I can say about it is over at the dedication, you might want to stay away from that juggler that's got the knives. They, for some reason, they had me go sit up there in a chair while that guy was juggling those knives over me. And the only thing I could sit there and think of, I'm glad it's him instead of somebody that lived here doing the knife juggling. The, what is neat, I think, about the library and the Aquatic Center, we had a fantastic turnout of the people, as Bill said. The one thing that I think that now, is where we go, we used to go and look at people's projects to see what they were doing in their community. Now we have people coming to Florence to look at our projects to see what we have done in the right manner. And I think that's one of the gems. You were talking about the direction the town needs to go in. I agree with you. We need to be working on that. But I think it's a start where people are coming to see. The other thing I will mention is that Florence is going to be 150 years old next month or next year. We will be getting together a committee here within the community. We will be talking about that this week and getting the information out to the paper, who is going to become a member of the citizens committee, I'm sure. Right, Mark? And that's what I thought. To be involved with the planning of community events coming up next year. The, it's not every time, and not every day you turn 150 years old, especially in a historic area like we are. So we're going to have a good time. We're going to put on a good party. We've got a lot of planning to do before then, but we're going to get it done. Is that what it said? Get her done? That's what we're going to do. We're going to get her done. Need a motion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion, a second to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.